We'll call the meeting to order, so we'll call.
Brady Bonsel?
Here.
Matt?
Here. I'm pretty sure I'm here.
Dennis is not here.
Dennis is not here.
So.
Okay.
And we don't have anybody here for public comment?
All right, very good. Well, we can move on to review of the current comprehensive plan. I did my reading.
Did you?
Today, but I read it.
What'd you think of it?
You know what I was surprised by? Some things in that plan have come to fruition, but it is nearly the same argument today that it was 20 years ago. It's fun to see a few of the things that they had vision for that have come together. You know, some of the improvements to city entrances, like changing the Y out there and fixing the, um, on the north end of town where Caldwell connects to 27. And, um, so it was kind of neat, you know, there I noticed something in there about a comment about a big artist painting a huge sunflower painting for town. You know, some of their visions did come true, so that was kind of neat, I thought.
Sure. Any other thoughts?
I was kind of looking at the demographics and stuff, just kind of seeing what the others was like 97 and it's like, uh, just where we are today, it seems like it's, they had more people and the balance, you know, like I was looking at the age groups and everything was like a 10%, you know, 10% of the little young people, 10% mid-range, 10% older, you know? And I think now it seems like we've probably got more older than young people from what I'm seeing, but maybe it's, maybe that's not true. So it's just the demographics now. I'd be curious to see what, what's changed or how much was changed.
Sure, sure.
I'm guessing we'll probably do a survey or maybe you guys have a survey already or something like that.
It looked like most of that stuff was pulled from the 1990 census, so, you know, we've got a fairly new census right now. So it'd be pretty interesting to see how they line up, but I wondered that too. Has it really changed or is that my perception or is it probably? I, I bet my perception is not reality. I bet it hasn't changed as much as I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'd be curious to see where we are, you know, how much has changed, if it has.
I know they say that the school classes are smaller, at least the current school classes.
Yeah.
In the high school. I think the elementary schools are a little bit stronger.
Yeah.
Or a little bit more. And it would be interesting. I mean, I view this town, I guess I've been in a couple of other towns that were really heavily centered towards the older demographic. It was hard to see any kids. And when I saw it, it's like lots of young kids, well, in my perception, just because I came from an area where there was hardly any.
Yeah.
It was, and they like treasured the person that had a little baby, you know, it was like.
Yep.
And, uh, there seems to be a good section of, you know, young families here, but it does seem to be, you know, a gap between people with young family or young children and then not nearly as many until you get to a much older demographic.
Yeah, and then there was another part of it, I was in the same section, I was talking about kind of Carolina and where the same thing we were thinking today, they were thinking then about, we need something for the younger people, just the people who stay here.
Yep.
Whether it was jobs or whatever.
Right.
I mean, that's still the case.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's just, I was just going to go through it.
Okay.
Um, and we're just going through chapters one through three on the comp plan update, just to set the stage. And, you know, it starts off introduction and gives you an index of what is the deal. Then chapter one, the planning process. It's the primary purpose of the plan. Um, it's supposed to look out, and a lot of times comprehensive plans are looking out 20 to 30 years. And what you'll do is you'll look at it each year, but then kind of do a mini-update every five years. And then 10 or 15 years, you'll do a, a big.
Yeah.
A big reading, depending on how much has changed, you know, if it's warranted. So, um, it's looking at the long-term future, but it also has near-term focus as far as what actions should be taken. Um, then it goes into the planning process, which we talked about last time, is kind of a coordination between, um, city staff, the governing body, and the planning commission. They're all kind of involved. Um, this, the plan started with a survey of the perception of community stakeholders and city, city staff about existing city services and programs. And then there was focused groups of volunteer citizens with identifying the issues most critical to the growth of the city through the next 20 years. They continued with a policy charrette to study the issues and evaluate proposals, basically have a more in-depth discussion and a facilitated discussion about the city's future growth, land development patterns and strategies for adequate public infrastructure services. And then finally, a series of workshops is being held. So, and then they go through the major components of the plan. And they go through, obviously, the geographic location. And then how to implement the plan. Um, and they go through, the planning implementation is through the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and then the role of the planning commission. And the role of the city commission, the role of the BZA, which you guys also serve as, and you've had a couple things come up with that. And then the basis of decision-making. So, any questions that came up on your reading of chapter one?
None here.
I do have one question, I'm just thinking of, uh, you're talking this through, and this is more of a business model or work model with this, where a lot of times business had, we have a vision, vision statement, right? So I was wondering if Goodland has a vision statement and if we use that vision statement to kind of make our model or, or game plans or, or what, what do they use to make that so they can see down the road?
Yeah, I, I haven't come across a singular vision statement. I don't know if they've had one. They might have. I just haven't come across it. Um, and a lot of times with the comprehensive plan, there'll be certain themes that come out of it. And, uh, and I think there are a couple of themes that come out of this in the following chapters. The, uh, chapter two, on page 11, is the demographics. Um, they had data reported from a variety of sources, including the census of 1990, the estimates for 97, 98, and projections for 2002. The 2000 census data was being finalized as this was completed, because this plan, as it states in the bottom of the page, is October of 2000. So, it probably was written over the summer.
Yeah.
And then approved, so that they could put the October 2000 on it, so. There probably are, didn't have the results from the April when that's reported.
Makes sense.
Except for numbers. You know, it's 1990, it was almost 5,000 population. Whereas right now, we're probably 4,400. Forty-four hundred, forty, may, forty-four, fifty, it was like right in that range. Slightly more female. And then they give the age brackets, which always is hard for me to, I need a comparison with another community to.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything's almost like 10%.
Yeah, it's 10% for each.
Kind of strange how that works out like that.
But the last bunch, you know, from eight, from 25 onward, it's 10 years at a time. Whereas it's 18 to 24 is only six years. And while all the previous ones are six years.
Yeah.
So, zero to 25, each 10%, but it's six years.
Yeah.
So. Although 10%, 75 and over, you know, I, I don't think that's extreme. I should have. I wonder if I could get that real quick.
That's my department.
You think? Or I probably got it on email.
I'm sure a lot of that's changed with the retirement homes that we got here. Wheatgrass, I don't think Wheatgrass was here.
That's right, yeah. So, yeah, we may have pulled some older folks in from surrounding communities that moved into there, yep.
For the younger generation, maybe like 18 to 24, might have more with the tech college.
That's right.
Not sure if we're doing more. Do we have more people now then? Isn't it different?
Yeah, I got this. With the, um, consultant that was doing the housing study.
Okay.
Now, they have slight, well, they have the same age brackets from 25 onward. But below that, they have different age brackets as this one.
So if you, if you lump the 75 to 84 and 85 plus in this study together, it equals almost the same as the 75 and older.
Yeah, it's 444.
A little bit bigger.
Yeah, it's 12 more people.
Yeah, so that's interesting. Pretty close.
Yeah. Zero to 24, what is that? 1186. So, it's 1,200 plus 273. 1,473. And then I need to add in my head these four numbers. Remember that one, 1,473. And then, um, I can scribble it on, then you can 288 and 489.
And we got 1330 for that same group.
They have about 300 more people that are 24 and younger from 1990. And the 25 to 34 group is also about 130 more.
So it's almost proportional to the decrease in the total population to the decrease in each bucket. Doesn't look like there was a big swing in any of those, so.
Um, they also see the income and educational attainment. And then housing occupancy. About 67 only occupied, and I wonder that's in this report as well.
Yeah, I would imagine the, uh, household income is kind of considerably different than what's in there.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to look at that with inflation adjustment, just so you're looking at dollars to dollars. But I would guess that that's improved with, um, the college expanding, you know, yeah. That sort of stuff.
I mean, I know the weather service out there.
Yeah.
20 employees out there, they all make good money.
Yeah, yeah, good paying jobs, yeah.
So here's the 19 estimate of the income. So is that, oh, that's, that's the whole, can I see that's the whole?
Yeah, her buckets are quite a bit different than this one, but, um, it definitely has moved up with higher, lots more higher earners than what there was in 1990. Is that what that one say, 84 that are over 150, and this one had zero in 1990?
Exactly, I was like, wow. Well, like you say, inflation, you should definitely compare that.
About two-thirds of the housing units occupied by owner, a third occupied by renter, or vacant. And then they give the comparisons to the state of Kansas. But it would be interesting to have a regional comparison as well.
Yeah. Some of those same towns that Jeff just mentioned, Colby, Scott City, Joaquin.
Yeah, the number now, almost four, 450 Goodland back in 90, 97, to what it was for the state.
Yeah, I noticed that too, yep.
One thing, on the census, it does list, that's one thing I'm is troubling to me, is that there's about 200 housing units in town that are vacant but not being used. So, you know, someone owns the property, but they're not not occupied. And so, you know, we have over 2,000 housing units, with 22, 2400. Quite a many, but about 200, about 10% is, you know, either too dilapidated to
Right.
use, or it's owned by, you know, whether the family, you know, someone, you know, parents that passed away and then they haven't decided to
Yep.
move on from the house. And that, that's just a large number to me.
It is, it is. Well, I know like my neighbor, uh, yeah, he, that, it's not occupied, it's not being used. And I go on Caldwell, uh, Jimmy, Doug Lesby, he owns that house, and he bought a house out in South Town. Yeah, you're right, so that's, that's 200 homes that you could provide for people moving in or.
You know, if they were in decent shape. There's some homes that Jeff tries to work with, you know, as far as.
Yeah.
They're not in decent shape. There's an awful lot of homes that are, so.
Sure.
Yep. Yep.
Well, it's hard on a house, when it's not, every year, you know, when someone not occupying the house, the house be carried.
It gets worse, yep.
You're seeing more people doing more of the DIY type stuff, fixing up homes and, um, wanting to put their own touch of whatever decoration or whatever. But, I mean, I think people want to do that, if they like those projects, but of course affordability is an issue now.
Sure. Any questions on chapter two?
No.
Well, just, uh, no questions, but from what Jeff was showing us, if we go through this and we want to renew this, could we use what Teresa had? Or, or would we have to use the census or?
Well, to update this, probably what I would suggest or recommend, and I've already recommended to the commission, is to hire someone to assess that does these type of things, you know, firm, just like this was done. Um, Booker Willis and Ratliff helped.
Yeah.
The city staff put this.
So they try to pull all the data and?
But that would be a key component, that's one piece of data to use. And it definitely could be used in addition to the census data. Um, and like I said, I think it would be behoove us to have, it has Goodland's example and it has the statewide example. I think there needs to be something in between.
I agree. Some comparative, comparative communities, yep.
A lot of people probably think we have, definitely have that Colby.
Oh, yeah, we have to measure up.
We gotta find some way to, you know.
That's right.
Put Goodman's name above Colby.
We gotta look for.
Start people up. Oh, man, we can't, we gotta, we gotta beat them once.
The chapter three is the issues identification. They had a strategic planning session in the end of 1999. And I actually recognized some of the names, which is kind of surprising to me. That participated. And then they went through the strengths of Goodland. What do you think of that list?
A lot of what's I agree with today, and a lot is the same.
Yeah, I think we could come up with a real similar list. Obviously, a few little changes here and there with some of the industry, ag industry that's changed, but a lot of those, I think, same, or people would put those same things on the strength list.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I had a couple of things. Again, both at the, the college, I know we got the VOTAC. Where it's college now, I think it kind of changed things a little bit. And Goodland Tech, it's added some stuff. Few other restaurant, not restaurants, hotels.
All right.
Would be a stopping point or a, or rest stop for a lot of people off the highway interstate. Yeah, K O A.
Yeah, yep.
And then they list the weaknesses.
I thought it was cool that there's a couple of things that have been addressed, so, you know, aging school buildings was on here, and it's been a really nice upgrade to all the buildings. Um, and I, somewhere in here, it was called out about, you know, the junior high, the Grant Building, so, you know, that got addressed as well. I don't think that was on the weakness list, but, um.
Sure.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah.
Speaking of the, the school buildings, the one on Central, are they repainting all that or remodeling?
Remodeling.
Be nice.
That's awesome, yeah.
Nice.
Seeing the negative of exposure to I-70 drug traffic. That's probably, uh, increased, I would think, with Colorado. Would like to see the one industry economy change, if there's something to do there.
You know, it depends on the opportunities that present themselves.
Yep.
I think Goodland Tech is kind of presenting an opportunity.
Yep. Yeah, I think that sort of just the state of the world has caught up to, you know, you don't have to live, you can live in Goodland if, even if your job isn't here.
Right.
You know, so that's going to open up some opportunities, I think, for a lot of people. That was an interesting conversation through reunion about talking to people my age that, you know, want to raise their kids here and are looking at what we did, moving our kids back and thinking, I could probably do that. My job would probably let me live here and do that, so. That would help with the increase in that, you know, 35 to 45 age. In there, and then bring the young kids in too.
And the young kids too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, most people, I think they have to go to the big city to get the big jobs.
Yeah. COVID made us all realize that little towns are a pretty great place to be.
Yeah, a lot of people move from the bigger places off here just to get away.
They also added three elements they considered with both positive and negative. As far as Walmart, small, middle class, and large number minimum light runners.
I, I don't know that those would change a lot for me anymore either. I think there's positives and negatives to Walmart, provides a lot of jobs, but you know, it is what it is. It's Walmart, but, uh, does give a lot of people a place to go to work.
Yeah. And then external opportunities. Some of those are happening.
Yeah. There's where the, the Van Gogh came in, possibility of a sunflower artist creating us. That happened.
Well, and the air traffic, I can see more of that happening, especially with the additional work being at, done at the airport.
Yeah.
And the costs at other airports could present an opportunity.
Well, I can tell you from a corporate standpoint, we, our, my company, we lost our jets during COVID, our CEO cut that, but, uh, we used to fly customers into our headquarters all the time, and I always flew them out of here because this was the easiest airport and it's, you know, it was and we could get our big jets in and out of here because of the length of the runway.
Sure.
And we could, they could get, our pilots could get in some small places, but they liked landing here because it was easy.
A little bit easier.
Yeah. So I used this airport a lot before we got our jets taken away, but, uh, I think that's an opportunity for companies just like ours, and I, someday that'll probably change for us too, if, you know, that we can fly customers again. But, you know, it was a great day trip to take farmers to our, um, headquarters, tipping them up in the morning, have them home by supper time, and we had the airport that could handle it.
And then they have the external threats, which I don't know, there's all kinds of external threats, and then there's additional ones happening right now, so. But there's so much uncertainty right now.
Yep.
And then they did, uh, key person interviews, which is kind of interesting as well. They had a summary of the information they gathered from that. And I don't see much that has changed from that, those conversations.
You know, you know, in the ag, when they talk about, they talk about sunflower plant and they talk about, um, you know, the edible bean markets, both. Well, the sunflower plant's obviously no longer, but, uh, you know, 21st Century's done a nice job of filling in that edible bean market. Um, that's always been a big thing in Northwest Kansas, so, you know, it's a pretty cool little business that's awful unique.
Sure.
Um, but agriculture is, I mean, that, it's the, that's the forever, you know, it's gonna, it's all going to hell, right? I just told you, farmers need to be reassured that everything's going to be okay. That's what I spend my whole day doing, but I noticed in here, you know, they're worried about low commodity prices in the 90s, that certainly was the case. Today, we're at record farming comes, and they're, you know, some of the best commodity prices we ever had. No bushels out there because it's all dry, but, um, that's, I think that's always going to be the cycle, and we're heavily ag-dependent, um, community, so.
But even with high commodity prices, there's additional challenges on the horizon.
Yeah.
With the inputs.
Logistics and, yeah, inputs and a war in Ukraine and Russia, that Russia's the largest world fertilizer supplier, and they're not letting anybody have fertilizer right now, so.
Well, there's additional things happening in our nation.
Yeah.
Whether it's sabotage or something else going on that's affecting supply. Whether it's sabotage or something else going on that's affecting supply as well, so. But, yeah, challenges.
Yep.
A need for more involvement in the community. Don't know if that's ever resolved.
I had a friend once that called, had an acronym for, you know, people that just don't want to get involved. They're cave people, citizens against virtually everything. And there's plenty of those out there, but I don't know, seems like there's plenty of good things going on right now, too. You look at what Jules is getting done and, I mean, she is getting some cool things done in the community and people are getting involved and that's pretty exciting.
Yeah. There's a good core of folks there. And some newer folks. Refreshing. The core.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's the thing is, you know, I've talked to her and at my work and talked about culture. Thought about changing the culture because that's what people are used to, right? So they just kind of, well, it's gonna go with it, what you gotta jump on board with the culture and change, otherwise it's not gonna change. You know, and he said, why the same way always have, well, how does that work for you? Try something a little different.
Yeah. Yep.
Let's change the culture a little bit. Like I say, during these Friday, our Friday evening activities in the park, I mean, it's been great seeing people out here, just getting out. And whether you're listening to the music or socializing with people and just getting out using the parks has been great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just takes time for people to jump on board.
And then they had a group focus session. They had. What was it? About nineteen people show up and looked like they had a pretty good conversation. And they had the following issues were identified, future land use, enforcement of zoning laws. Oh, and then there's an awful lot of stuff, but they basically added in the four kind of. Overall issues and then what are the items within that issue? And then they were, had the ability to vote on which one was the most important. And. Need industries to attract young people. It's a theme. Enforcement of zoning laws, trying to get, take care of, you know, the dilapidated housing. Downtown vitality. And access to community, which I don't. And had four comments, it would have been interesting to see that written out, what were the four comments?
That was in the public facilities section, I noticed.
Right.
So. Yeah, would have been good to see the comments.
And then they have several others listed. Any questions, concerns, comments regarding what you see there?
Pretty relevant.
It's frightening that the job base is kind of the middle towards the end. For improved job base.
Oh, yeah, it is kind of in the lower third of the list, isn't it?
And then they. Had a charrette. The nineteen folks were divided into four teams. Two of the teams focused on future land use and public facilities, two teams focused on quality of life and economic development. And they recorded their visions for the future. And. They were asked to map the sea limits in ten years, new boundary was drawn. Need to exploit and improve airport appearance, extend the runway. Cemetery expansion, residential on west and east and south side of the commercial industrial. Which some of that has happened.
Yep.
And then they showed ag. And then the hog confinement farms must have been a real issue.
Yeah.
Has it been a while since it's come up in this community or?
That's about the last time I remember it coming up was in the late nineties when I was in college. They, the old seaboard was expanding and they built a lot of them when you get into eastern Colorado near Holyoke. And they were looking here, too.
This is another one, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, they also built down in southwest Kansas. Oklahoma. And then they have housing. Infrastructure, which. Some of that has been done.
See that?
Housing in the first sentence. There is a chicken egg building there.
I mean, build the houses and the jobs will come or wait for the jobs to build the houses maybe.
They don't know which one's going first and that's kind of what the Goodland Tech is.
Yeah.
And the time delay between you start building a house.
Yeah.
You're still gonna have the demand by the time.
Yep.
It's hard to do a spec. Or to have anybody interested in spec when it's. Really one house at a time.
Yeah. Yep.
To do a whole street or a couple of streets, the cost is so prohibitive. I mean, we went through that with the grant, the base grant that we were going.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we didn't receive the grant, but. Just the cost on a per block basis to do just. The infrastructure for it.
Yeah.
Just makes it prohibitive. And it's. It's not getting better, but in order to get new housing. It's hard to think of it in this way is that then you have new housing structures that are going to be here for the next seventy to a hundred years.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be contributing, they'll contribute to the valuation of the community, they'll contribute. To have decent places to live. But the initial cost is, well, that's too much. You can't get to the starting point.
Yeah.
But that's not a unique issue to Goodland, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, it's across the state.
Then because there's a lack of inspectors or just, it's just cost that much for them to.
It's the developers, it's people willing to take the risk. I mean, I've, you know, had it happen in. A town halfway close to Wichita and it was difficult. You know, it was during, you start building and then you have a slump in the aircraft industry and then. Um, things die a little bit and in the meantime, he's, the developer has too much money. At risk and he's. You know, he's got bills to pay. And there's just, you know, Colby is, I understand, is building. One street or two streets. Of something. But even that's pretty small. In order to do the infrastructure for.
Yep.
And it just becomes so much cost per lot to do. To build it. And so there's so many, you know, you can give away the land, but that's not the true, that's not the big cost. The big cost is the water sewer, the streets and the drainage.
Yeah, right.
And then before you even put a shovel on the ground, you're thirty to fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then people say, well, it has to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. There's hardly a house anywhere.
Yeah, you can't, you can't build that at all. And, yeah, you've already got a third of that cost tied up in just your lot.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, you've, you've priced your house out of anybody's range.
Right.
For what people really are looking for, what's needed, I think, you know, we've got a pretty big gap at that, you know, one twenty to one hundred and eighty thousand dollar houses. There's nothing on the market.
Right.
You can't build them for that either.
No. No. They talked about infrastructure, they talked about public lands. And some of this you've seen kind of percolate and develop into like the topside trail. Type thing. Commercial industrial. And all those things. And then I guess they did that again. And then they talked about quality of life and the economic development on the page twenty four. And. The pretzel north of the airport, what's the pretzel? Has that been resolved?
Or Caldwell connects and goes off to the landfill, yeah. It used to be really dangerous intersection. And kid got killed there, yeah.
Yeah, probably one of the better things you're doing.
Yeah.
To have them much stay out of the park.
Y entrance, out there by the Van Gogh. We lived out in the Armstrong edition when I was growing up and you wouldn't believe how many times I took out that stop sign at the Y on state roads. You've gone like that and this stop sign coming this way, boom, right to your stop sign. Happened.
Rick Ray's know, let's.
Yeah.
Think there's more that can be done, what was improved.
Yep.
First impression needs improvement, East Airport and Highway twenty seven entrances need work. I do hear from people that they didn't realize all this. And I didn't realize it either, never drove into town before I moved here. Or had the potential for moving here. People don't go past the railroad tracks, they don't think this.
Yeah.
The town town.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's all bad. Keeps, keeps the town secure and.
Yeah, I think it's good to have a division between, you know, that, that traffic that's just here for convenience versus, you know, the young families that live here, it's a nice, nice line. Yeah.
It's almost natural.
Yeah.
Because of the railroad.
Mm hmm. That is a drawing boundary for our kids, for sure.
And then they get to the synthesis of results of all these discussions and interviews. They had identification of specific issues, including land house, which was housing, blight and land use compatibility. Processes should be in place to provide for the orderly development of the community. Do you think people would welcome that? Or is there a little bit of Wild West mentality that?
Well, there's a lot of Wild West mentality.
I should be able to do with.
Yeah, I can do, I can do what I want because I'm putting money into it and I'm making it better, so just leave me alone, let me do it. Thank you for doing it, but let's do it so that it's safe and will last a hundred years. Yeah, yeah.
Well, and just like the, you know, we had the, I like that thing that's in the code and I don't know how much it's been used before. But the site plan review. Or been used on a regular basis. Is for commercial and industrial properties is to. You know, it's not necessarily to say no to the proposal. But there may be something said that can make it even better.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, if we can get people to view it more as that. It's not that the rest of the community is going to say no to your proposal, it's just, let's make it the best proposal it can be.
Right.
And if you have that attitude going in, I think there'd be a lot, you know, a lot better result.
Again, it goes back to the culture, right? And, yeah, it changed people's thinking.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, there's a need for additional storage, but. Is it in the right place for the long term? You know, that'll affect the properties around.
That's right.
The economic development and I think downtown vitality. I don't know, I think we have a lot of neat downtown buildings.
Yeah, and our main street is much healthier now than it was in the late nineties. You know, that late nineties was the start of Walmart and a lot of the traditional stores left. But it was also folks that were at retirement age and there was no legacy planning.
It was about the time.
It just was a big, yeah, it all came together at a, at a time, but, gosh, today, there's not very many empty Main Street buildings. And we get calls all the time for people that want space.
Yeah, I think Ulysses, there's like over a hundred businesses on Main Street.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, you look at like a hundred businesses.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was like, wow.
Well, it's a long Main Street.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like I just went on the first and. There's a group of folks that are going to do the first impressions for Ulysses and Ulysses folks are going to come here. And I went there, there's, other people are going at different times. But they have basically three blocks of downtown.
Yeah.
And then they have the hospital and then, you know, that kind of extends it, but for actual businesses, it's about three blocks.
Sure, yeah.
Whereas ours, you know, it goes. Whereas ours, you know, it goes eighth to seventeen.
Yeah.
Now, it's not entirely, there's a school in the middle and S and T and
Yeah.
which is kind of sort of a business, but, um, but it's a lot of business, a lot of
Yeah.
long area. Single industry economy. Labor pool, accessibility, industrial parks, tourism. I like the idea of the K O A folks. And I think there could be an opportunity, not just for the K O A, but for others that
Yeah.
provide that stopover and the owners were talking about it being, they understand their niche here. It's not for long-term stays. It's for one or two nice days and, you know, they're going to the mountains or they're heading back to the mountains.
Yeah.
Or going cross-country and this is just a stopover.
We're, we're dead center of the US right here pretty much, you know, and I think Norton is actually the
Sure. Quality of life, they have population decline, which has happened. Recreation, education, historic preservation, retirement living, culture. I do think there's an opportunity for additional, maybe not retirement, retirement, but you know, the before, the, you know, stages.
Yep.
Pre-retirement or?
Yeah.
Yeah, sort of like, uh, you're done with your big house and your big yard, but you're not ready for Wheat Ridge. An apartment, you know, kind of luxury apartment kind of place, you want an upscale place that's zero maintenance, but, yeah.
Get yourself, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's people all along the I seventy quarter, or towns all along the I seventy corridor that experience the same thing.
Yeah.
And public facilities, utilities. Infrastructure. So that's what sets the stage for their, and we'll talk about that next time, the goals and objectives.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, comments? Does it make you kind of interested in doing an update to the conference of plan?
It does for me, for sure. I mean, like we've talked about a lot, I think that a lot of the themes are the same, but I would love to hear a new perspective on it. And what is interesting in here is that I feel like their group of nineteen was a pretty big group. I would hope that we could draw, I mean, if we did it again, I would, you know, I would hope there'd be nineteen or twenty or thirty people that wanted to.
Participate in a, a little bit of lengthy process.
And maybe what the, um, the board, the Shrim County Community Development Board, um, I'm not sure, that's Julie Seastyle. Yeah, the, with what they're doing with the, um, um, you know, some of the community planning ideas or, you know, just trying to spur things on. Maybe there's quite a few people that have participated in that, I think, so. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, we went to the, uh, Cliff and Kit's All-American Grill or whatever.
Oh yeah.
I mean, they've done everything in there, it's really nice. And before, the service was a little slower, but the service was great. I mean, we went here the other day and, I mean, I think that's just, people just gotta get, get in there and kind of get experience it, you know? I think that's what it is, where, where it's just, again, the culture, if people make a change, you go, we always go here.
Yeah.
Well, and the restaurant business is a tough business.
It is.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I know, this is, it's, I, I'd like to see, because this was twenty years ago. And of course, you know, Matt and I are on this and Dennis and we were here twenty years ago to see what our perspective is now. See what the people, twenty, the twenty-year-olds or whatever, thirty-year-olds now, what their thoughts are, your input.
Well, that's, that healthy competition is a good thing for Northwest Kansas.
It is.
So if we can push each other as communities to do that, it'll, we'll all get better, so.
But you know, then there's that, we gotta push each other, but then we gotta work together.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if we do that, I'm not in those parts of it, but it seems like there's a lot of division. There are a lot of times when we need to come together with other communities to save resources and come up with ideas and we can, everybody can gain from it, you know?
Yeah, our view of this quarter, the I seventy quarter from Burlington to pass Colby all the way, you know, and onward, we're part of the same team.
Yeah, right.
You know? Because, you know, it's part of the same general culture.
Yeah.
Compared to the front range.
Right.
Or, you know, eastern Kansas or central Kansas, so.
We're either the first view of Kansas or the last.
Yep.
So we, we, we have an impact, you know? I don't wanna come back to Kansas or, man, this is a great place.
Right.
We, we should have a photo thing, because there's so many people, every time, as we drive, all my family's back in Colorado, so we drive that way all, I mean, multiple times a month sometimes. And there's someone always stopped at the Colorado, you know? Welcome to Colorado. Need to have a sunflower, something, another photo off something.
Believe it or not, I've seen people, we do have a welcome to Kansas sign or
Yeah.
I've seen people pull over, taking a picture.
Sure, it's, we were making that comment, coming back from Denver the other day, though, the Colorado side is like, it's almost become a rest stop over there. It's a huge pole off now, there's trash cans, the Kansas side, they, they did put some gravel over there. Not near the draw. Yeah, yeah, just a few more miles and then that's probably really where people stop, but, yeah.
Well, we've taken about an hour, I don't want to use up too much of your time, we don't have to go through the zoning ordinance tonight if you don't want to. And, uh, just wanted to review this so that you kind of, um, understand a couple of the key issues, when it would come up for.
Yep.
And how it fits, how these regulations make our town the way it is.
Yeah.
Because you can do certain things and it changes the look of the town.
Yeah.
It was like in a previous town, they wanted twelve and a half foot side setbacks. And nothing in Cedric County was that, was that far apart.
Yeah.
But that was twenty-five feet between houses.
Yeah.
And they were so insistent, that's what we want, that's what we want, that's what we want. And I said, well, that's getting back to how much housing costs.
Yeah.
It created additional cost, um, to have that, but it created a look and feel for the town.
Yeah.
And there are certain key things in here, well, we'll talk about tonight, because we've been going through enough, but there are certain things in here that kind of create the town that we have. And it creates the environment that people want. And then, so then what is, what are those keys? How does it work well? How does it provide a barrier to certain things? Um, and is there anything that we could talk about to, you know, either create a different sort of district or do something else that, um, meet certain needs if we wanted to do that? So, that's all.
Great.
Unless you wanted to talk more tonight?
No. I actually have another stop after this one, so I probably need to wrap up if everybody else is good.
That's good. And we're missing Dennis.
Yeah.
And Dennis is missing the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have to give him the quiz next time.
Yeah, see if he read it. All right, with that, I move adjourned.
Did you want to hold off on the minutes until next time?
Yeah.
When Dennis is here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's probably, we'll wait till he's here. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Close? All right. Jeff wants to stay.